Do we have everybody? Sort of everybody's starting to trickle in, it looks like. Hi Jeff? Paul? Kristy?
You have Dwayne and Matt Lamar here. Dwayne Cozart and Matt Lamar.
Anne and Paul, who's doing minutes?
Paul's gonna take minutes, I believe.
Okay.
I am trying to record it on Soniclear, but we're a little unsure of how the audio recording is gonna be.
I'm gonna try to take minutes, but I'm trying to get to my minute-taking page and I can't get out of... I think I have to get out of this in order to do it.
Anne, you can record the meeting with Zoom. It looks like it's recording.
Oh, I see.
That'll be a big help.
Okay, it says I need to request permission from you, Heather, to record it.
Well, you have my permission, but I'm not sure where I give it.
I think it looks like it is recording already by the host, but I think for you to individually record, you then need permission from the host as well.
It's a little bit so your face is right there.
Well, I'm not so sure I'm actually the host, because I didn't start this meeting. So, somebody else made it turn on.
I think me started it. I sent him a reminder.
It looks like I'm the host. This is Sarah. Sorry. Well, it is recording on my end, Anne, and I can send you the recording once it is finished and uploaded.
Perfect.
And then, do you want me to monitor chat and all that, or do you want me to give that hosting capability to you?
We discussed either going to Heather, or if you would like to do it. So, I think it's between you and Heather, who would like to do that.
Okay, I'm happy to offer to do that, not that the chair is not doing that, but Heather, if you'd like to, I'll pass it along.
Yeah, I mean, you're just saying as far as monitoring as to work with doing the meeting.
Yeah, monitoring like the chat, and then if anybody raises their hand, I'll be looking at that.
Yep, okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for everybody's patience. Paul, are you all ready for us to start roll call?
Heather, also, do we have Bud? It looks like he was having a little bit of a communication problem, maybe.
Yeah, a few people on here that I can't see who they are, or what, who's on by phone.
Heather, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna be on a Word page and not on the large screen of all of you guys. So, I'm ready to take minutes.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to see what we may do in this scenario. Sorry, guys, this is all obviously new for everybody here. What we'll do is we'll do roll call of commissioners, but then we'll also go through, and if members of the public can identify yourselves also. Some of you have names that pop up, but some do not, so I'd appreciate it. We'll start with a roll call of Planning Commission members present, please. Lynn here.
Guthrie here.
Is that all we have? Tritz was on here a minute ago.
I saw his name on the participants list.
Howard, are you here?
I just unmuted him.
Will somebody say, "Howard, are you here?" if he's unmuted?
No, I don't see him.
I see him still. Howard, are you? Howard, can you hear us? Wow, this is proving to be more difficult than I thought it was gonna be.
It's all right, it'll take time.
Well, I don't know that we can proceed without a quorum at this point.
No, we can't.
So, we'll need to wait a couple more minutes. I apologize for the wait, but just maybe give us a few more minutes to get some of these other people online.
Heather, I'm gonna go ahead and try to reach a couple of them by phone as well, and see if that proves helpful to maybe give them some. So, I'm gonna mute myself for a minute while I try to, just for a minute here. Or Sarah, if you don't mind muting me for a minute.
All right, we'll do that.
Bud, can you hear us? Apparently not. And Tritz is also on here with Bud, but... I'm backwards on your phone.
I have no idea.
Good.
So, I have... Hi.
Amazing.
You can't do a phone call with audio and computer audio. It makes that echoey sound.
So, sorry about that, but I do have Bud on the line. He said he can hear and see everything that's happening. And so, I will keep him off speaker, but he said that he feels okay about proceeding and allowing me to be his voice, if everyone is okay with that for a quorum.
Can he participate via chat?
So, Bud, you can, because we saw your chat before when you asked if we could hear you or see you. So, if you could type in the chat box, you could participate that way as well. He said, "Okay."
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and take you off the phone call, then. You've got my number. If you need me, call me. Otherwise, we'll look for your response to be written. Okay. Okay.
Do we need to try to get ahold of Howard now, too?
Yeah, let me work on that. Does anybody have Howard's telephone number? Easy, quick and easy.
I do. I'll do it really quick.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
I can hear her, can you?
I don't know what happened. She has her speaker off.
Okay, she's talking on the phone.
Okay, same situation with Howard. He can hear and see us, and he will participate via chat. Okay, so let's try that again. Let's get roll call of Planning Commission members, please. We have Lynn here.
Guthrie here.
And Bud and Howard, if you guys can just put your "here" in chat, that would be helpful. And while they're doing that, if we can get county commissioners present, please.
Marcella here.
Mudge here.
Glenn here.
Great. We, I believe we have minutes on the agenda. I just had that pulled up. Let's see if I can do it again. Minutes on the agenda that we're gonna skip. We'll table those to the next meeting. We have a housing manager update from Kristy. Kristy, if you can give us a quick update.
Everyone, I hope you are staying well. We have not had a Housing Coalition meeting since February, but we are hoping to have a Zoom meeting in May. Not sure how many of you guys know this, but Lake County Village Generation was assigned the duty of a BOAD, a volunteer organization active during a disaster. So, we have shifted a lot of our work to helping with COVID relief. And that has been really busy, and just in the last week and a half or so, it started to slow down. So, I'm able to free up some of my time and start focusing on housing again. I have reached out to a lot of our Coalition members and started talking about what anticipated changes we might need to take. And I would love to hear from all of you, any feedback that you guys have on things like that. For the Climax Parcel Committee, we had heard about a month ago from Nell that everything was still on track, and there's not a whole lot of update other than that. And then, with the deed restriction committee, I think most of you know that we very unfortunately lost Amy Mastin. And so, not quite sure how we're gonna move forward. She was the champion of that committee and had so much knowledge that we're not really sure where we're going yet. So, hold tight, and at some point, I think we will bring you some recommendations for deed restriction. The policy advisory team has canceled their Summit County visit, but they are going to continue the prioritization of building and land use codes via Zoom meeting in the next couple of weeks. And then, I just had a little bit of exciting news that I wanted to share with you. CHAFA, the Colorado Housing Finance Authority, donated $10,000 to Lake County Village Generation for relief. They also gave $5,000 to Full Circle, and I can't remember exactly how much money they gave to St. George. But they had reached out to us because they knew that we were doing housing work. I had been speaking to them about a couple of different things, and so they reached out to us to find out what the needs in Lake County were, and then gave that generous donation. So, that was really great. Any questions about how housing work is going? Okay, feel free to email me anytime. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you, Kristy.
Welcome. Okay, now we'll move on to the new business items, and we have an extension request for File 19-06, the Gateway Village PUD subdivision. So, yeah, I'll let Anne start with the staff report on this, please.
Thank you, Heather. So, we have, staff took in a request from Gateway Village. They were granted a conditional approval, as you may all remember, with 35 conditions at Sketch Plan, April 1, 2019. Their approval lapsed at the one-year mark. They have come in and asked under the... So, went to code for an additional one-year extension to that approval. The code allows for a one-time, one-year extension with the applicant showing good cause. So, this is a good cause hearing for the applicant to be able to explain to the Planning Commission and the board the basis of their request. Staff has provided suggested motions for both approval and denial. And with just, there are two different, I think, viewpoints on this that were contained in the staff report. One is, well, I'm gonna allow the applicant to kind of go into greater detail on the impact of having to go back to the sketch phase. Or potentially, the opposing side of this is with Gateway Village being the largest subdivision of record, I believe, that Lake County has ever contemplated allowing, you know, just the discussion of, does this saturate the market a bit if other developers are looking at Lake County for potential housing development? And so, that's just contained within the staff report. I think those are kind of the overarching two different viewpoints on the request. There was an outstanding cost that Lake County incurred in the review of the Sketch Plan in the amount of $10,746.09. I emailed everybody an update I did today, received from Matt Lamar. I checked in the amount of $10,746.09 for the outstanding fees that are due to be reimbursed to Lake County. So, I am in receipt of that and will deliver it to the treasurer for deposit tomorrow. And so, in the suggested approval, one of the conditions was making sure that these fees were reimbursed in a very timely manner, along with this being only a one-time extension to be granted, and that the new approval would then be expiring April 1, 2020. And likewise, there is also a suggested motion for denial. There aren't specific findings other than the finding of good cause. So, staff did go ahead and provide some findings along with the motion for convenience. And so, today is the joint public hearing for the applicant to be able to demonstrate and explain the basis of the application for good cause. So, unless the board or the Planning Commission has any other further questions of staff, I would love to turn it over to the applicant and let them further explain their situation.
Madam Chair, may I add something to that?
Sorry, yes, can you?
I just want, and Anne can probably explain this in better detail, but we are reviewing this or using the old code requested under this extension request, because it was approved under the old code. The new code is a little bit more detailed, but it also allows for only one extension.
Right, the new subdivision regulations has a little greater depth to the criteria for the findings to grant a one-year extension, but that it has the same remedy available if a developer is seeking an extension of an approval. So, the outcome is the same. The kind of lack of findings in the old code, you know, the only finding is good cause. The new code has several different criteria in order to be met. And so, but this approval was gained pre-new subdivision amendments. So, that's why we've used the previous code. But the outcome and the cure are both the same. Any questions, staff?
If there are no questions, we'll staff, we'll let the applicant go ahead and say anything, if they have anything additional they'd like to add.
Do you want me to go ahead and state my name and my address?
Your name is good, I think, for now.
Okay, this is Dwayne Cozart with Granite Mountain Development LLC. We are the applicants for the Gateway Village PD. Come before you today to ask for an extension. The major basis for this extension is health problems on my part. Early October of last year, I had a car accident that sent me to the hospital, and I had a concussion, severe head trauma, and was basically out of work for an extended period of time. And only recently, after the first of the year, probably January, February, was able to begin to start to look at the project again. With that being said, we would ask for an extension as we are preparing to move forward. The only other obstacle we see in the way right now is funding has dried up a little bit for a short time because of COVID-19. It is difficult to find funding for these type of projects, but we feel confident that once the money loosens up, that we'll be able to move forward as planned previously. And I'll take any questions from there.
There is a question in the chat from Bud. I don't know if every, I think everybody can see it. It says, "Would new expiration date be in 2021?" And then, the answer is yes, new expiration date would be April 2021, I believe.
Yeah, I believe it would be April 1 of 2021. Is that correct, Anne?
That's correct. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I can't do math.
Okay, are there any other questions from Planning Commission members or county commissioners for the applicant or staff at this point?
I don't have anything right now.
There's one from Kayla in the chat.
Yeah, Kayla just put one in asking if the Sketch Plan can be extended more than one time.
Code allows a one-time extension.
And so, this is the one time?
This would be the one time, and the suggested motion has a condition that it is the one and only.
Hey, Steve Boyle's here. Did you guys see that?
Hi, Steve.
At least in chat.
Yeah, that's great. Any other questions from Planning Commissioner or County Commissioners? Bud just put in, "What must happen before April 21?"
So, they would have to submit for preliminary and have made application for... They would have to make application prior to their Sketch Plan expiring. They'd also have to apply within time for review notice requirements. We'd have to, we would not be looking for them to apply April 1. We would want them to apply in time to meet the 10-day review period and the 30-day notice period. So, there would have to be work done previous to that to show good cause on their side of the equation, too. So, we'd want that submitted prior to the expiration.
If I may, can I add some information?
Yes, go ahead.
Currently, we have all of the documentation prepared and ready to be submitted to the county for the preliminary plat. We were, the only reason we haven't moved forward, besides my health problem that I had, that I'm doing much better now, is we are waiting to see what's going to happen with COVID-19. As soon as the economy looks like it's rebounding, then we are ready and prepared to turn in our application for preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you.
Anne, to clarify, it looks like Paul has said that we would have, it would just have to be accepted by April 1, so that'd be 10 days prior to.
Okay. Any other questions out there?
Steve, I just wanna, it looks from my end that Steve is not muted, but he was having trouble, so I'm wondering... but he was having trouble. So I'm wondering if he, if we can hear him.
No, I don't think so. I think he's just a, just a chat participant also. Okay, do we have any members from the public that have anything that they would like to add? Comments or questions? If so, I'll need you to state your name and we may need to get your address and things for the, for Paul to do minutes. But is there, are there any members from the public that have anything they'd like to say? Yep, go ahead.
I would, Patrick Lucero and Carol Lucero from 18248 Highway 24, Leadville. We are right below where this project will happen. And my question is, there was, you stated, I don't understand that real well, what, what's going on with this one-time application or renewal? But I know I was laid off due to COVID. And COVID is a big thing. And in regard to, I've worked a lot of construction, et cetera. And this is not a normal year to, you know, can there be a, what am I trying to say? Could there be an, an additional update? Maybe six months, three months, you know, because of this. I know funding's tough to get at this point in time. I know we've had that problem. But we're on and on and so that's what I would ask the commissioners at this point in time. If, I know it's a code thing, but I would imagine that as a body of commissioners, you can extend that another six months or whatever for, since we do have the COVID in place. That's all. Thank you. I don't, I, I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. I babble a lot.
So right, so, so to give you a little bit of idea of what's happening. You know, if a developer wants to do a subdivision in Lake County, there's kind of three parts to that. Sketch plan is more of your visionary. Here's kind of the idea we have and what we're thinking. Preliminary is when they really dive in and they say, okay, here's more of the details to that. And then final is when they've got all of the final stuff done and they're ready to go. They, this applicant has gone through the Sketch Plan, kind of the visionary piece, and gotten the approval for that vision. And by now, he would have needed to submit the preliminary, which was a lot more detail as to what it's going to take to create that vision. More reports, more engineering, you know, all of that fun stuff. So because he wasn't able to do that until now, he's asking for an extension for next year. I think that what you're asking is whether or not it can be a six-month and then another six-month after that? Is that what you're asking is for it to be more of a six-month extension instead of a 12-month extension?
Well, no, the 12-month extension, but if needed, maybe another six-month or another portion of an extension.
Okay, laid on, on top of that.
Correct.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that Ann and Paul can probably speak more to whether or not that is allowable in our code. I think that one of the reasons that they tried to do a one-time, one-year extension is because a lot can change in a community in two years. So if it was a year to now and then we do another year extension, then we'd be looking at extending that longer instead of just saying, you know what? Now that things have changed after two years, we need to go back and, and look at the vision again and make sure it still fits in what this community is doing. So generally, I think that's why it's a one-year extension and that's it. And that would probably be my thoughts on that.
I, I, I'm just bringing up the point that this COVID is not normal for what?
Sure. Well, and, and that's kind of another reason. Yeah, COVID, COVID could change the whole nature of our community and what it needs and what the housing stock could be. So it could, it could unfortunately push a lot of developers back to the, to the starting block. I hope it wasn't. I hope that things recover quickly and we can all pick up kind of where we left off. But I think the community knows that right now. So it's kind of a, kind of a waiting game for the next several months.
Sure.
So absolutely what Heather would say is unprecedented times for sure. The code allows for the one-year extension without the ability for anything beyond that. But as Heather has pointed out, the picture for the developer may equally change and they may not want, you know, so a two-year timeframe is thought to be a good amount of time to make sure that what's being brought forth, the vision, remains the same. Or is there evidence that it needs to go back to the starting point again and revisit things? So at this point, the code doesn't consider anything beyond a year extension and very much for the reasons that Heather has pointed out. And in these times, at certain times, it's probably even more relevant to probably not think about extending beyond a year.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, I'm hearing none. Do we want a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Oh, there's Bud.
Jeff will second. Was that your second? Okay, he's seconding. All in favor to close public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Bud says aye.
Howard, are you there? Steve, are you there to, to put in an aye on the chat?
Boyle puts in an aye.
Okay. Tritz is aye.
Yep.
Okay. At this time, public hearing is closed. Commissioners can be dismissed. You guys have a lovely Monday evening. Everybody else may stay on if you'd like to hear deliberations with the Planning Commission and...
Can I, can I now transfer the host to someone else so that the recording can continue?
I don't know. That's a great question.
I, I know, I know how to. You really don't have to do anything except do not stop the recording.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even, yep, that would be fine.
I will make you, I will make Heather the host.
Okay.
Damn it.
Heard that, Paul.
I was thinking out loud.
Heather, it looks like you are the host. Do you see where it is? Recording at the top and then on the bottom where you have the option to end the meeting and stop or pause the recording?
Uh, yes, I think because I'm on screen share, it kind of changes that a little bit.
Ah, okay, yeah.
I've got it all here. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Sarah. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, um, any comments or motions by the Planning Commission?
No, it's a pretty valid, I sympathize with you, Duane, having been in a motorcycle accident that set me back quite a bit. So I know what you're doing.
We have a motion of approval by Bud. Do we have a second? And what we may need to do here is, I mean, he's saying motion to approve file 19-06. I don't know if Ann, if you could just read the motion of approval and he can say so moved?
Be happy to. Do you, do you mind giving me the screen share again? I can, I can get into my documents too, unless you can.
Nope, it's right here.
Okay, um, the Planning Commission, or, excuse me. Bud Elliott moves the Planning Commission recommend approval of a one-year extension for file number 1906 Gateway Village PUD major subdivision with the following conditions. Number one, the one-year extension will be granted upon the reimbursement of all fees owed for engineering, planning, and advertising expenses incurred by Lake County in association with the Sketch Plan review. The applicant acknowledges and agrees to reimburse Lake County for such expenses as evidenced on the cost and fees agreement documents submitted at the time of application. Approval becomes null and void if all fees are not paid within 14 days of said approval. Number two, the new expiration date of the approval for file 1906 Gateway Village PUD major subdivision is April 1, 2021. Number three, this is the only extension that will be granted and further finding that one, the applicant has dismissed for a good cause for the granting of a one-time, one-year extension for file number 1906 Gateway Village PUD major subdivision. And two, the granting of this extension promotes the welfare, safety, and health of Lake County by supporting the development of diversified housing opportunities.
Okay, great. So Bud, can you just say so moved? And then I can ask for a, do we have a second out there?
There's one from Steve in the chat.
Oh, yep, okay, perfect. Any discussion on the motion?
I would just mention that I do have received, I have received the check, so it'll go in for processing. So just, just an update on the first condition.
Okay, can I get a roll call vote, please, on the motion?
Guthrie, aye.
Lind, aye. Howard, are you there? Can you do an aye? Unless you're opposed or any motions or any votes to oppose. He may not be on anymore. Howard, can you hear us? Okay. Oh, he's calling me. Hey, Howard. Okay, that's an aye for Howard also. Okay, great. Thank you. Bye. Okay, um, the, the motion carries. I guess we are all finished up unless Paul or Ann have anything additional for us that we need to talk about? All right, well, this was really fun. See if we can fine tune it for next time.
Yeah, let's, let's end this.
We have a motion to adjourn by Bud. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Awesome. It was good to see some of you.
It's good to see you guys are doing well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, commissioners. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, bye.
Stay healthy.
Thank you.